Okay, I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, April 14th, 2020. This is a remote meeting. For anyone that's listening, we would like to get questions at public comment at cityofbatavia.net if you'd like to ask a question either now or during the meeting. And we'll start off our agenda tonight with roll call.
Miller? Rosado?
Here.
Eck?
Here.
Knop?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Aaron?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uwer?
Here.
Drone?
Here.
Eckfadden?
Here.
Okay, we have the necessary quorum to conduct business tonight. The next up on the agenda would be a reminder to please directly into whatever you're using to communicate with tonight. So we can record this and get it back out to the public. So if they need to review it, they can. Next up would be items to be removed, added, or changed. Is there anything tonight?
No.
Okay, hearing none. We will move on to matters from the public. Do we have any questions or matters from the public tonight?
Keenan's here.
I don't see anybody raising their hand. I will let you know that. I believe Keenan Miller has been able to join us through audio.
Are you here, Keenan?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Just barely. Okay, next up would be the consent agenda. Alderman, Chantet?
Yes, Your Honor, one item tonight. It is ordinance 20-30 to declare surplus property. And I would move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second, Knop? Motion by Chantet, second by Knop. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up will be item number six, Resolution 20-60-R authorizing a change order for the 2020 sidewalk and curb replacement program. Per the memo, this is for a change in the sidewalk replacement along North Batavia Avenue between Wilson Street and Houston Street on the east side. It would be a little bit over budget based on the quote, but because of the projected savings from the sidewalk program, we're actually in better shape on that. And I do believe we have had some email comments or questions going back and forth. And I don't know if Gary, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You want to go ahead and chime in on this?
Sure. So really, there's two budgeted items in the 2020 budget. One is $125,000 for the standard sidewalk curb and replacement program. The other is $32,000 for this stretch of North Batavia Avenue. They were not bid together, so this would actually be a change order to the sidewalk and curb program. But the sidewalk and curb program was awarded at $125,000, but the actual bid was only $98,000. And at that time, we had requested to award for the full budgeted amount because we anticipated some additional work which we're going to have. So we're anticipating the sidewalk program coming in at around $115,000, hence that $10,000 savings below budget. And then this project, we got to receive the bid for $34,000, which is $2,000 over the budget. So in the end, we'll save the 10 on the sidewalk program and 2,000 over on this one, we'd still be 8,000 to the positive over the budget. Staff did consider really a couple of options for this, consistent with what we did in the other block between First and Wilson. We did look at spot repairs of the actual bricks. That was done in this very block between Wilson and Houston. That was done probably eight or nine years ago. I know it was right before we started the streetscape process. And based on our costs from back then, to do that now would be about $10,000. Our staff is recommending actually going forward with the full removal of the old concrete bricks and installation of new concrete, which is a permanent solution for this $34,000 value. So the staff is recommending that we go forward with that.
Any comments from the council?
Yeah, this is Mark. So yeah, I brought up in the email I sent yesterday that, you know, we just talked about this a couple of months ago, doing things for streetscape. It's some of the curb cut issues on 31 moved towards things for pedestrian safety, having too much of a curb cut there in front of the old martial arts studio. I think we have the opportunity. We don't do it now, and we, when are we going to do it 20 years from now? Because it wouldn't make sense financially to just rip up the sidewalk in the future. I did notice the quote, I can't remember which project it is, it just came in from Rahat, that was like $300,000 under estimate. So I know we're trying to save some money, but I also know that we're trying to move forward other initiatives. We're going to have a hot pod if we don't do it now. It is, I realize it's a tough time. I'm just wondering, it didn't seem significantly expensive to go and do the things that we want to do. So that's my opinion on that, to add in the trees.
Alan?
Yes, go ahead, Mike.
This is Michael. I would agree with Mark on that. I guess my question is, are we looking for a permanent solution right now? Because it's not my wish to take streetscape off the table. And we haven't been speaking about some sort of streetscape on Batavia Avenue. I'd be more inclined, just spitballing it, to just put, as much as I'm opposed to concrete paving blocks, put the concrete back and patch it in, and that's the least expensive way to go. And then it'll be a lot easier coming out when we go and finalize the streetscape.
I guess my comment on that would be, I like the idea of being able to put some trees out there, but I also feel like the church had purchased a property next door, and I believe they're planning on doing something, I don't know how soon, but that may change access on that block, where they want to have curb cuts or how they want to do that. So I'd be hard pressed to say, let's put in a tree that's going to last there for 20 or 30 years, if we don't know where the street access is going to be into that property. So I don't know that I'd want to do anything more than just replace it with concrete right now.
This is Abby. I would second what Mark said, and closing up the curb cuts in front of that corner building. The church doesn't own the building on the corner, correct? They only have the old Acosta's?
Right.
Okay, so we've got the, those handful of spots that direct in parking on the corner building that could be closed up, and perhaps just leaving the access to the open parking lot between Acosta's and the martial arts studio, especially that being such a prominent corner as a gateway. If we could at least get some street trees over there and close up those curb cuts, that makes it much more comfortable entry into downtown where a lot of people are walking, a lot of people are crossing the street right there. And Gary, how wide is the sidewalk there currently?
Towards the northern end by the former furniture store, all the sidewalk in that whole block is fairly wide. I mean, it's, you know, a good 10-foot, 10-foot wide sidewalk. Just so everyone's clear, the 34,000 does not include any curb and gutter work and removing and closing driveways and repaving driveways. That's even more cost.
I would love to know how much the trees, I think, are in a small increment to add if we're already saving money in that part of the budget. And I would love if we ever, you know, for all future sidewalk replacement in the downtown area, if street trees were just automatically included in the bid request. So that just becomes the norm that we are always putting them in.
Again, every tree is about $2,000 to go in in the downtown.
Hey, Alan?
Yes, go ahead, Mike.
Can I jump in, please? You know, as Gary said, every trees, I agree with Abby on that. And the cost of the trees is $2,000 that's removing the concrete sidewalk and digging down. But when we're replacing sidewalks, I mean, we're already going to be taking the sidewalk out, the concrete out. So it shouldn't be quite as much. I know there's still going to be costs involved in it, but it shouldn't be quite as much. So I would agree with Abby. We know, we are a tree city, and I think we should keep trying to follow that norm.
That was the cost, because that's what we paid for over on Island Avenue, where we totally removed the sidewalk and then put the sidewalk back in and then put in the trees. So that is the cost.
Okay, thank you. But I think it's money still well spent, $2,000 to put trees in, however many.
I would go back to maybe what Alderman O'Brien was saying. If it's council's desire to do some nicer improvement here, some larger scale improvement, then maybe we wait for the church property. First of all, property owners are supposed to be paying for improvements adjacent to the property. So perhaps the church would contribute some of the cost. That would give the opportunity for a final plan to be done in conjunction with the church property. And in the interim, we do, you know, $10,000 that gets us by until the church is redeveloped. That way, we're spending minimum amount of money now, and it still allows council the option in the future for what will be the permanent and ultimate improvement when that day comes.
I don't know. I worry about that. I worry about how long is it going to take until the church does redevelop? And given the width of the road right there, how much, how much more can we do in that area besides sidewalk and street trees? I mean, if the road was a little skinnier, maybe we could have a landscaping patch between the sidewalk and the street. But that's a future, that's a future dream, but that's not something that's going to be, I don't know. I think, I think, I think street trees are a, are a small add that we could do now and, and be flexible enough with, to allow for changes on the, on the block in terms of development.
We can get a cost for the, for the curb and gutter. I mean, the street trees themselves may be just a small add, you know, like four trees might be $8,000. But that's not the curb and gutter to close the driveway. So that, that, that might be another $10,000 on top of that. Pretty soon, we're going to be adding $20,000 to the contract fairly quickly.
This is Laura. I just wanted to, in terms of the timing of when the church property would be developed. So they have sat down with the city and shared the elevations of their development plan. They haven't submitted for a building permit, but also they are leasing us space in the old Acosta's furniture store to store the toys for the toy drive. And they were only willing to sign an 18-month lease because they said it was their intent, they hoped to be under construction soon thereafter.
Laura, just as a follow-up, this is Scott. They have, we have not had any conversations with them for probably about six to nine months at this point. And, you know, there's a zoning approval that they have to go through as well. So it's not just a permit, they have to go through an actual zoning change and I believe a planned development because of some deviations from the code that they're going to need to. So that, there's a whole process going to be involved when they decide to move ahead.
Hey, Scott. This is Michael. How long does that take?
Probably six months, I would guess, for just the zoning part.
So, I mean, so in reality, they could be under construction in less than two years, from what I heard, correct?
Right, right. But I mean, we've been discussing this with them for literally years now. And I know that they're in a fundraising mode for this thing. So, you know, it's really dependent on their fundraising efforts, I think.
Right. And I understand that for sure.
I guess, again, my, my drive on this is, I agree with Abby. I think we need to do something with that streetscape on that side. But I also feel like until we know what's going to happen there, I don't want to just drop trees in out there. Because I know, I've seen the sidewalk up over there, I've seen the parking lot torn up over there. It's all gravel and bedrock underneath that. I don't know what we'd have to do to put the trees in. So I'd kind of like to wait to do any improvement like that to it until we have a plan for what's happening on that block.
The other thing that I would like to mention is that at the southeast corner of Route 31 and Houston, that is the bank's property, not the church's. And there has been environmental remediation going on there. And I believe that there's still at least one monitoring well that is required by the I E P A from the environmental remediation plan. So I'm not sure what impact that might have on our ability to plant trees there. I just don't know.
And I know that the business immediately across the street to the west, the mobile station has an off-site test well across the street that was required by the EPA.
So Alan, I think, the way I see it, I'd like to, to support Abby on trees, but it doesn't sound like it's, it's for the short term in the cards. But I think, seriously, we should probably do as Gary was saying, is just the, replace the concrete pavers that are defective. And just for the short term, just get it safe so there are no tripping hazards, till we know what's going on with the church, with the bank, with the remediation. And if in four or five years, we decide to do a streetscape. So that would be my take on that.
This is Abby again. What would be the, what would be the remediation? What would stop us from planting a tree on a, on the public right of way if there's remediation going on?
Access. So if that was a spot that the I E P A needed access to, they wouldn't want us to plant a tree over it. But I don't know exactly what restrictions are in that area. If we were to show them where the trees are going to be versus where the monitoring well is, maybe it's fine. But I, I just felt that it bears mentioning that that might be an impediment.
I'd be willing to risk it to have a couple of trees for the next four, you know, two to five years while we wait for what's going to happen on that block and then plant a streetscape around it. I think we could plant a streetscape around some trees. But I also understand the concern of not wanting to duplicate efforts, so.
So Abby, if it's, say we get one or two trees on the south of Houston Street, like on, on that corner area, southeast corner, you know, coming down south a bit, you know, that's only $4,000 at the most. And so, you know, if we put those in there, according to Gary's memo that he sent out, you know, anything further to the south is obstruction to the church, to the other buildings. It's going to be somewhat tricky putting trees down there.
Yeah, I think that corner is kind of, yeah.
But then that, that's the corner where the long depressed driveway is. So you can't, all in front of the former furniture store is all parking and depression for, for access to the park, parking. So you can't, you can't put any trees there without redoing the driveway and the curb in order to, in order to make it work.
I thought there was a building that didn't have the depressed curb there. I know there's that driveway in between, but that corner building, that.
Yeah, there's that parking lot that comes in between the two buildings, between the Acosta's building and the old, I can't remember the name of the furniture store. But in front of the former furniture store is all perpendicular parking that goes straight out on the Batavia Avenue. So when you go with the curb right at the corner, it extends south of Houston Street, maybe 20 feet, 30 feet, and then it goes to depressed curb. And the rest of the way, it's all depressed curb.
So maybe we can put one tree in there, in that area. At least we put something that that shows some greenery, to Abby's point.
Yeah, I think that's right where the excavation was, where they did the remediation.
Yeah.
Bet I'd seen that open there.
Yeah, and I believe that that still hasn't been fully resolved, and that's part of the reason why the property hasn't sold. So, you know, I think some of the, I think some of the contamination actually went into the right of way. So, you know, we probably would want to check with the property owners before we go too far into that, because obviously we don't want to be excavating contaminated soils and have a deal with that necessarily.
Anybody else have any comments?
Yeah, I'll make a comment. Alan, this is Mike Rosado. I think we have too many unknowns going on right now. And I think we should wait a while to see exactly what the plans are before we proceed on putting trees in that in there.
This is Tony here. I agree with Mike. The, to put concrete down, I don't think that's going to be our ultimate, what we ultimately want to have there. I think just putting some Band-Aids on it for now is what I would support.
This is Marty. Do we have any spare of the large concrete planters? Plant some greenery in there, which could break up the monotony of what I believe Abby's talking about, the green kind of desert that's through there.
Yeah, we would have to order those. We don't just have those sitting around.
Yeah, no, I was being sarcastic.
No, I mean, it's a good question. I think it's a fair, very fair question, actually, to do concrete tanners up there. Yeah.
Yeah, because it would, it would solve the greenery, but it would also eliminate some of the, the questions with the remediation, the temporariness of the nature of spending money. And you could put that, and then if we put trees in there later, you can move the planters somewhere else.
Well, if we did, if we did to follow along that line, if we did the brick paver replacement, which is only around $10,000, we would have money left over. And there's a precast company out west, I can't remember what their name is, but that's the company that did all of our planters. And to that point, you know, we would come back to city council with a cost. And if council wanted to move forward, we could get some planters cast and then, and put those out there. And that, that can be a separate decision for a separate time. Tonight would be just to decide what you want to do on the sidewalk. But that's, that's a good point to pursue if we go, especially if we just go with the brick remediation option.
Yeah, that's, that's an excellent idea, Marty. And I like the brick remediation option. And if we were to put something out there to break that up and give it a little bit more appeal, I'm fine with that. And that's also something we can move other places when we get around to actually doing a streetscape project on this block.
Lori actually whispered it to my ear, and I didn't want to make her mad, so.
Okay, so then do we want to not vote on this tonight and just do a brick remediation in place of this? Or would you come back with another resolution on that, Gary?
No, I think if council just gives us direction to proceed forward with the brick repairs, because those will only be $10,000, we don't necessarily need formal action on that. What we could do is just remove this item from the agenda with no action taken, and then staff will just proceed forward with the brick repairs of the, of the brick.
I like that option. So moved.
I do, too.
Second. Okay, I have a motion, I believe, from Knop and second from Rosado. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. You have direction.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next item, which would be Resolution 20-58-R authorizing purchase of self-contained breathing, breathing apparatus from municipal emergency services of Deer Creek, Illinois for an amount not to exceed $262,250. Q for you here?
Yeah, hello, everybody. So as I told you late last year, that I got a grant from FEMA for $262,000, $250 worth of self-contained breathing apparatus, which is the air packs that we bring into fires, and we call them SCBA's. They'll pay 90% of the purchase, and we pay 10% of the purchase, which is $23,841. Kind of doesn't look like 10%, but that's the way FEMA calculated 10%. So it's not bad math, on my, our current SCBA's are 13 years old right now. And at the 15-year mark, we have to get rid of all the bottles and buy new bottles because they only last 15 years. So it's right about at the, the point of being expired. The, we have an SCBA committee that we brought in three different manufacturers of SCBA's, and we had the packs to try out for a couple of weeks. And then we also received proposals from the three different manufacturers. And those proposals are on the memo. The field testing for the, came back, Interspiral was not really, was not, had some poor performance, we thought. The, they found the mask to be heavy. The items attached to it were awkward to maneuver with. Nobody in Illinois is used as a reference for their air packs. And a lot of it was made out of plastic, which we thought was prone to breakage. MSA, which is probably the second biggest, or one of the two biggest SCBA manufacturers in our area, we had some concerns about the potential problems and some long-term costs. The, some of the hoses, we felt that they were prone to twisting and, and maybe even getting kinked when going into a fire. And then as far as long-term maintenance, they needed to be overhauled in 12 years. There was firmware updates that had to be done. And the batteries were roughly about $240 each because they're rechargeable batteries. And we thought that all that would lead to a significant cost over a 15-year ownership. The Scott SCBA's, which is what we have now, and we've had Scott for about the last 30 years, I replaced the SCBA's 13 years ago with a grant that I got from FEMA back then. And, but they were the ones that were favored by my firefighters. They performed well in our training. The electronics were all sealed in epoxy, so that no moisture could get into them. And they had a lifetime warranty on all parts, upgrades, and overhauls. So there really is very little cost to them over the, over the life of the air packs. And the batteries are simple AA batteries that you can buy at a hardware store. We also, back in 2008, I got a, another FEMA grant for a, an SCBA filling trailer, which is a trailer that we bring out to a scene and we can fill our air packs at the scene of a fire. That is a Scott filling trailer. And if we were to get any one of the other two manufacturers, it would require quite a bit of modifications to bring that one back up. So we are recommending going with the Scott air packs. They all came in, the, the items that I had on the grant, the cost for just those items came in well under what I asked for on the grant. And what FEMA does is that if you come in under the grant amount, many times, or most of the times, if you request, they'll allow you to spend the rest of the grant on other items that are related to that purchase. So for us, we are looking to use the remaining funds from that grant to buy spectacle kits, which are the glasses that go inside the mask, adapters and filters for use in toxic atmospheres, or even biological ones like COVID-19. And also rapid intervention packs for rescuing trapped firefighters. So we aren't going to go over the, we're going to stay under the, the total amount of the grant. And so the most that we'll be paying is $23,841, and that has been budgeted for this year, so.
Okay, any comments or questions?
This is Joe. I have a comment.
Go ahead, Joe.
Chief Dackey, I really appreciate the, the work you and your team put into doing the research, the report that you had, the memo you had. The report that you had, the memo you had submitted with this, I think shows the level of detail and care your department takes in, in researching things that number one, keep all the firefighters safe. And number two, do it with, with overall costs of the taxpayers in mind. I think you've made a great decision and everything you've got in there was, was very nicely done. Kudos. It makes it real easy for my vote on this one.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
This is Laura. I just wanted to say how much I appreciate the fact that Randy looks for opportunities to apply for these grants. And the city, this isn't the first time that the city has been the beneficiary of him seeking out these opportunities and allowing us to purchase equipment at a substantial discount. So thanks, chief.
Thank you.
I'd like to echo what Laura just said. You know, I'm, I believe I'm the only one still on the, that's on the council from when this was done the last time. This was something I remember, we had a lot of discussion about these different packs and the, the equipment that is just, you know, so essential to the firefighters to have this stuff and have it work every time they use it or anytime they need it. That I'm really glad that, you know, Randy was able to put together another package here that takes advantage of money that we don't have to take from the taxpayers at a bigger scale than, you know, what they gave to the federal government to get returned to us. So I'm really happy about this. I think it's pretty self-selling here. If there are no other comments, I would make the motion that we send to council with positive recommendation, Resolution 20-58-R, purchase of the self-contained breathing apparatus.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by.
Malay.
Second by Malay. One of you guys on that side, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, chief. Next up would be Resolution 20-59-R, license agreement with the owner of the popcorn depot. Laura, did you want to fill us in on this?
Sure. The popcorn depot is a historic part of the, of our downtown. It hasn't always been located where it is currently on the corner of North Water Street and Houston Street. At times it's been located right there on Wilson Street. But we had a previous agreement with the owner, Robert Lerner. I think the last time we had a license agreement was back in 2012. And sadly, toward the end of last season, a sign went up on the popcorn depot saying that Robert Lerner was no longer going to be operating the stand. And luckily, the, there has been a negotiation for the sale of that business to a new owner, Batavian, and her name is Talitha Mueller. And she is very excited to carry on the tradition of the Batavia popcorn depot and also provide employment opportunities to young people who are in the special education programs of Batavia High School. And so staff is recommending that the committee of the whole recommend approval of the city council of Resolution 20-059-R, authorizing an amended license agreement for the use of land as the popcorn stand.
Well, I wholeheartedly support this. I think this is a great thing. It's kind of a really cool, old-time Batavia thing that has maintained itself through just about everything. Anybody have any comments?
Yeah, I want to jump in here on this one. This really, I think, is a passionate example of kind of a Batavia tradition that's been with us a long time. I've got a copy of the Historical Society's newsletter in my office, if anybody's interested. But they did a story last year about this, which illustrates that this, this facility has been in downtown Batavia within 500 feet of where it is now since 1929. So we are celebrating its ninth decade in this town. And if you ask anybody that grew up here back in the 30s or the 40s or the 50s, if they're still alive, everybody's got memories of this. So this really has become quite, quite the community namesake. It's a very steeped-in tradition and something that I think is, is a very viable community asset to us. And when, I don't know, I don't know, Alan, you were on the council, but we, we agreed to let them move this thing over. It used to sit there right on Wilson Street by the bank parking lot. And we agreed to let them move it over there when we took down the old electrical system that was serving the downtown area and rerouted it all down south. And we used to have the electrical substation for the north end of downtown sitting on this property. And because it was a substation, it's a real odd-shaped piece of the property. It's like a flag lot in there that really nobody could do anything with. And I'll give Bill McGrath the credit for coming up with the idea of this was a place we could do it. Because, number one, because it was an electrical substation, we still had some electricity there that we could access into it and make it the space that would be still a very prominent part of Batavia's character going forward. So I just think it's a wonderful use to have in our downtown. It's, it's one of the great Batavia traditions that kind of lives on. It's like the Christmas tree out on the island in the Christmas time. I mean, there are certain things that are truly become Batavia, and I would suggest this is one of them.
Agreed.
Yeah, if I had. Yeah, I'm just going to jump in and on that, too. There were some comments about the Batavia Broadway shops that are going in. And it was, I believe, tongue-in-cheek, what is Batavia putting in a whole bunch of popcorn depot shops? And I believe it was meant disparagingly, but I think, as the mayor just pointed out, I hope the Broadway shops are as successful and have as much history as you just mentioned, going back to 1929.
Thank you. All right, if there's no other comments, I'll make the motion that we recommend to council, Resolution 20-59-R, authorizing amended license agreement for the use of land for the popcorn stand. Second. Motion by Wolf, second by.
Wrong, was it? Was it?
O'Brien? Okay, second by O'Brien. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up will be item number nine, a discussion on industrial opportunity for undeveloped property at Kirk and Fabian Parkway, requiring rezoning and amendment to the comprehensive plan. Laura?
Yes, so we have been presented with an exciting opportunity for economic development in the city of Batavia that not only would bring a huge industrial employer, but they also happen to be a manufacturer of lithium-ion battery. The way we became aware of this opportunity is through Intersect Illinois. Intersect Illinois is a, an agent of the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. And they notify all of the various municipalities and chambers of commerce in Illinois when there is a company that is looking to cite facilities in the state of Illinois to provide us with an opportunity to share with those companies areas that meet the specifications that they require. And we think that we might have a pretty great match for what this company is looking for. They are looking for a 37-acre site relatively level that could accommodate a building with footprints of approximately 950,000 square feet. They indicate that it would be an approximate $90 million investment and that they anticipate an employment count of 480 full-time employees within three years of commencing construction in 2022. Another reason why we think we are uniquely situated for this opportunity is because of the city-owned electric utility. The manufacture of lithium-ion batteries requires a tremendous amount of electricity. They're looking for a capacity of 1 gigawatt per year that's scalable to 10 gigawatts per year. And the site requirements include 6 megawatts electric transmission availability, but demonstrated for up to 30 megawatts for expansion. Gary Holm has confirmed that such capacity can be accommodated by the city's electric utility. It would be pretty exciting to increase the electric load that the, the city needs. Because as everyone knows, it is the unfortunate situation that we are contracted to purchase more power than we use. If this project were to come to fruition at 10 gigawatts per year, would absorb about half of that overage. So looking at the prospective Batavia site included in the packet of materials, there is a map. There is a roughly 37.3-acre site that is located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Kirk and Fabian Parkway. Those four parcels on the west side are owned by one owner. That is Joe Keim Land Corporation. The property is currently general commercial zone. However, we have contacted the owner and he has indicated that he would be willing to sell to an industrial user. So we have a willing seller in, in this case. The other aspect of the site is that immediately across from the subject property is the Aldi North American headquarters property and office complex. Just to the west and southwest of this property are large areas in the city which are zone light industrial. And there are also individual parcels directly south of the Keim property that are zoned general industrial. So in order for this property to be developed for the particular use that's part of this opportunity, we anticipate that it would need to be rezoned general industrial. And so that would require a change to the city's comprehensive plan. But I think one of the things that the city should consider is that in the time that this has been zoned as general commercial, there have been exactly zero proposals to develop it as such. And when we look at what is happening in the market, there are several studies indicating that retail space, like housing, as, is largely overbuilt here in the United States. And there isn't a lot of building of new retail space, especially in an area where there isn't a density of residential properties that would be the customers of that commercial space. As I mentioned, the vast majority of the immediate surrounding area is non-residential. And converting this to a general industrial use would be consistent with what is happening on neighboring properties. So if the city would like to attract this business, it probably would, it would have to entertain a change to the zoning on the property. And so at this time, we don't have to make the decision on changing the zoning this evening. Certainly, that is an elongated process that begins with the, the plan commission process. But we, because we have to submit an application that is due on May 1st, in order to be recognized by the company that is looking at the, the various sites to locate their facility, it puts us in a much better stead if the site that we are recommending is shovel-ready. And one of those things is whether it is zoned for the particular use. We certainly can't by May 1st make that declaration. However, we could say, well, it is zoned for general commercial at this time. The city is willing to zone it for a use that is consistent with what this manufacturer intends to do with that land. So we would make that recommendation that, we recommend that the city council consider and give direction to staff that they would be willing to reconsider zoning the property as general industrial in order to be available for this opportunity.
Hey, would anybody like to start off with comments?
I'll jump in.
All right, go ahead, mayor.
Yeah, let me just jump in. I give you a little history here. This, there, in 1977, there was 100 acres of ground out at the intersection of Fabian Parkway and Kirk Road, 60 acres on the southeast corner and 40 acres on the southwest corner. And Mr. Keim from Wheaton was the purchaser of the 40 acres on the southwest corner. And Aldi Grocery Stores, which was then just starting to do their nice development of their corporate facility on the other side. Phil Neely, who was then president of Aldi, came into the city and talked about their idea for eventually having a nice corporate campus there, which they certainly have made a lot of headway toward that with what they've already done. But that they wanted to acquire this other 60 acres for future use by Aldi. And so the city council then said, well, you know, and I think there was some discussion with Aldi that maybe they may want to put a store there, but which would be there as part of their corporate campus, as I remember, that may have been a conversation. So the city decided that because we were kind of, at that time, we didn't have anything on Randall Road, we were looking to expand our business district. And so the city made the decision to annex the total of about 100 acres out there, 60 on the south, or southeast and 40 on the southwest as general commercial and then allow for whatever change was going to take place there as time went forward. And, you know, I would suggest that probably the day will come when Aldi's going to be in here probably wanting to put that more into a, get rid of that commercial on their side and make that into some type of a corporate office, technology-type center-type thing. And on the other side, I think there's some conversation with Mr. Keim that he would be interested in retaining maybe three acres right on the corner to allow for maybe a convenience center or some type of high-end traffic user to be able to buy gas there, whatever have you. And I think there probably would be quite a market for that right on the corner. But putting this facility in there, as Laura's already outlined, would be a major shot in the arm for us for our electric utility, should that be, be, be successful in this adventure. And I think also would be a great job creator and would fit right in with everything else that we've done. Because the vision, going back to about 1969 or so, when former Alderman Brown's dad was mayor of Batavia was, there was about 1,300 acres out there on the northeast side. And about the only thing that was there then was the Walker Muffler Company, which is now Suncast, one of their buildings. And the vision was to make that a big industrial area out there or business area of some form or fashion. And I think this helps take us a long way toward realizing that vision. We've already done a nice job with what we've got out there. But I think this would really be a, a nice crown on the cap of the place right at the corner to show. And I would trust that it probably could be designed and built so it would be an attractive entryway building to be coming into our town. So I'm strongly in support of the idea.
Anyone else?
I would have to agree with the mayor on that. Electric utility could certainly use it. And I would just say that if we're talking with these people, we need to sell our electric utility. You know, it's, it's response time and it's, it's service. It is, it is a very good utility and, and not a redundant system also. I mean, if they're going to be doing all this, you know, we had, there were Rubicon. Rubicon insisted there be no breakdowns and we accommodated them greatly. We, we can do the same here. So I, I would definitely echo what the mayor had said.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Alan, this is Elliot. I'm just second as well, or third, I guess, in this case.
I'm just second as well, or third, I guess, in this case. You know, in particular, if general commercial has not enticed anyone to really come in and grab this area, which is along Kirk Road and a fairly visible site, no less, you know, you couple that with the lack of brick and mortar that's being built for commercial, you know, I think this is something we should definitely pursue, especially if it's going to help us get a big electric user against our base there. So, I'm definitely supportive of the change.
Tony here. I fully, fully support this, think it's a fantastic idea. Hopefully, we can get it. I think, you know, it looks like a prime location. We have our own electric utility and Fermilabs is a stone's throw from there. Surely, there's some connections there. So, I'm fully in support of whatever we can do to make that happen.
Alan, this is Marty. Yeah, I echo what everyone was saying and what was said on that. The question that I was going to go to is for this type of industrial use and manufacturing, what would be the environmental impacts or some of the concerns with this type of battery production? I think it gets a knock in other locations in the world, but that's probably due to the lack of environmental controls. How would that play into what was going to be done at this location? Probably for Laura.
Yeah, you know, I think that I'd say it's a balancing act from, as far as I know, the environmental concerns with regard to the lithium ion batteries are mainly associated with the disposal of those at the end of their life. And I think that looking at it from a sustainability perspective, like the big picture, the increasing the amount of and the performance of the lithium ion battery is going to reduce the reliance on, the future reliance on fossil fuels. And so, when you look at the big picture, I think overall, it is something very positive. Now, what I don't know, and I would be, I'm going to do the research on, is the chemicals that are involved in the process of production. So, that's what I don't know right now and we definitely should research.
Yeah, and that's my only question with it.
Yeah, if I may chime in, Scott here. That's one of the things that we would look at, both from fire and building code standpoint as well, that, you know, that the general industrial use is what would be suggested for this type of use because it's going to have some pretty heavy manufacturing processes. But as to the chemicals and things like that, that would all be part of the review at the building code and the fire codes, you know, for quantities and storage methods and that type of thing.
That's something that I have a question on and I think that that's, you know, good, that will be, you know, priority in going through this to look at whether or not this fits. I like the fact that it's the city of energy and this is the new energy, lithium ion batteries and, you know, the evolution of them moving forward again is, I think, a great thing to have here in the city. And Scott, are you there?
Yeah, yeah, I'm here.
Is this within the Batavia School District or Geneva School District over there?
I think it's in the Geneva School District, but I'd have to check real quick.
Actually, we have checked on that and it's pretty much Geneva, everything over there except City of Batavia. So, it's Geneva Park District, Geneva Township, Geneva School District.
Yeah, right, yep, that's the case.
All three. I do want to clarify, what we are looking for tonight is Cow's authorization for the staff to initiate a zoning map amendment as either straight industrial or primary industrial planned use developments that would allow for this use.
I think you have consensus. This is Nick, Alan, if I'll jump in. Laura, if I could ask a question above and beyond that, like, is that enough? Is that, you know, from a sales standpoint, is that all we need to do to lure these people or is there more we can do?
I am not sure there is more that is within our power to do because we have a process for changing the zoning that we must follow. And that takes time and several meetings and that is impossible to accomplish before May first. But I think that by you directing us to initiate that process and by virtue of the fact that this is a recorded public meeting and everyone has shown such an endorsement for us making the change to be able to avail ourselves of this opportunity, I think we're doing the best that we can.
Yeah, also, I think the selection process, Laura, did you want to talk about what that's entailing? Because this is a, is an application that we're making.
That's right.
That, you know, it's a competitive process essentially.
That's right. And this is the very first stage. And in all likelihood, this manufacturer has several states in mind where they may want to locate their facility. But, so, this is just the first stage. But there are so many things that we have going for us here beyond the perfect geographic site and our own electric utility. We are a stone's throw away from a large regional airport. We're within an hour of one of the nation's largest international airports. We are at the hub of Commercial Railway for the United States. There are so many things that this particular property has going for it. I really think that we have a great chance of getting notice. But I did, did I hear Gary wanting to chime in?
Yes.
I did, actually. Just to, just to say exactly what you just said, that this is part of an application process because Alderman's around and asked what more we can do. Anthony and Scott and Laura and Chris are kind of heading up the input into that application process to try and put our best foot forward as part of that formal application.
Yeah, so, as part of that application process, the first thing we need to do is make the cut and get notice. We aren't at the table now with the individual manufacturer. We are making a submission through the agents of our state economic development. When it gets to the next stage is probably when they would, for instance, ask about any particular incentives that might be available to them. That's not even really part of the conversation at this point. They give us, we have a spreadsheet to fill out is what we have at this point. So, we have to make a great impact on our spreadsheet.
All right, thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, you know, from the consensus that I've heard of everybody that's spoken so far, I think that this is something that we would like to see staff proceed with. I don't know if we need to take a vote on that tonight or how you'd like us to proceed with it.
I don't think a vote is necessary. I think we got consensus.
I think we got consensus, yeah.
Well, then I would, I would say then I will, if somebody will join me, I'd like to direct staff to move forward with this.
I'll join you.
Sounds like. Okay, you have direction, staff?
Yes.
Okay, next up would be project status. Laura?
Okay, I think I would like to start the project status this evening and each week by talking about the financial impact of the COVID-19 virus and what effect that we foresee that they may, that that may have on city finances and operations as things move forward. I wish I had a crystal ball right now. There are so many variables that it really makes it impossible to determine with any specificity from looking at it from today's perspective. For instance, we, at this point, don't know how long the stay-at-home order will be in place. Sadly, we don't know what businesses might just never reopen because of the impact that the situation has had. We also know that certain businesses have certainly seen an increase in business as a result of the situation. Another variable is that last year, the state began collecting from all online retailers the state income tax, I'm sorry, the state sales tax of six point two, two-five percent. But as of January first of this year, the state was also going to be collecting the local portion of those online sales. And with people in the stay-at-home order, certainly, if my household is any indication, online orders have significantly increased. But there are also things like the delays in the federal and state income tax. The state has also delayed by two months. Certain retailers report on retail tax. So, if there are delays at that level, there'll be probably delays in the way that that comes back to us locally. And then, long-term effect going forward, if there is high unemployment, what effect will that have on the income tax, the state income tax revenue and how will that filter down to us? And also, if there is high unemployment, that may have a significant impact on reduced household spending, which also affects our revenue. Certainly, there's been an enormous hit to the gas tax that we could expect to receive because people have been doing a lot less driving. What's necessary right now is for the city to look at preserving its cash. We have already incurred expenses this year for which we will have to pay as well as future unavoidable expenses. And therefore, each one of the department heads right now is taking a look at their 2020 budgets to determine what projects are we able to put on hold for the short term until the financial picture becomes more clear. We believe that we will have a presentation for you at the next Cow meeting about what are those expenses that we could identify as perhaps postponing until later this year or postponing until a future year. And this is happening, you know, across the board for everyone. And so, we continue to look at what others are doing as well in order to make course adjustments as the situation becomes more clear. So, we will have a discussion on that at our next committee of the whole meeting. Does anybody have any questions about that?
Laura, I have a quick question. We know that there are no utility cutoffs due to the governor's order. And a couple of people have contacted me about, due to the delays in getting unemployment benefits, trying to make their payments for their rent for their utilities. Their money is kind of slow, just for everything, reiterating everything that you just said. One of the concerns that a couple of people have brought up to me are late fees for the utilities. Are we waiving any of the late fees? Are we charging late fees? I did not know where we stood on that. I know we're not disconnecting, so I was able to kind of give some comfort in that, but then they didn't know our late fee is going to keep piling on or not.
As a matter of fact, the city has suspended late fees for utility bills. And we made that call back in March, for the month of March and April. Given the situation, I foresee extending that through the month of May as well because it was only a stay-at-home order through April seventh at the time that that decision was originally made to waive those late fees for April. And so, given the fact that the stay-at-home order has extended through the entire month of April, I think we should extend the suspension of late fees at least through May.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Are there any other questions on the finances? Okay, then I will move on. I wanted to give an update on where things stand on the One Washington Place project. We have had some conversations with both our TIP consultants and our TIP attorney. As we know, without the unanimous approval of the other taxing bodies, that means that option number one of extending the current TIF is now off the table. And so, we're left with the remaining two options, one of which is to DTIF and RETIF, which would afford us a new twenty-three-year term on the TIF, or to make adjustments to the project where the increments remaining, the potential increment remaining was enough to solve the butthole for a smaller project. If we want to continue with the same project, that might be possible. At the last meeting, the developer presented an idea of putting the commercial back onto East Wilson Street. I know that he has continued to work with his architect on that plan. And so, if it is financially feasible with a full twenty-three years in order to make those bond payments, probably the easiest path forward is for us to continue with this same project. By DTIF-ing and RETIF-ing, we could also have the possibility of being able to recoup some of the costs that the city has invested in the project, depending on what other areas we might include within a new TIF. Right now, staff is working with our consultants and with the attorney to determine, you know, what is the boundary that would both maximize our potential to be able to recoup those investments that we've made in the redevelopment area, but also make sure that it is narrowly tailored so that it only encompasses an area for which we would anticipate there to be redevelopment over the next twenty-three years and also fully satisfy the requirements under the TIF Act with regard to the criteria necessary for establishment of a TIF, such as that it's a blighted area, buildings more than thirty-five years old, very little appreciation in EAV over the course of time, all of those different factors. So, we believe that at the next committee of the whole meeting, we will have a proposal for the committee of the whole to consider on the DTIF and the RETIF or in the alternative, you know, also considering alternative number three, which is just simply leaving the TIF as it is. And the result of which, we would be seeking your direction on which path to take. And I think that the developer will also be attending that meeting and will have elevation drawings and be able to discuss the financial impact of putting that commercial back into Are there any questions about that? Are there any questions about that? Okay. Moving on, I wanted to give an update about the Bike Share program. Certainly, this is going to be one of those items which is on the list that will be submitted of things, projects that we could delay or wait until a future year to implement. However, I also wanted to share with you some of the reasons why we might want to consider doing this project this year. I had a conversation with Ryan Peterson, the gentleman who came out from King County Division of Transportation to talk with us about the program. And whereas back earlier in this year in February, there had been a lead time of six weeks on the purchase of the bicycles. As it turns out, Colony ordered them all, so they're all in stock. So at such time as we are willing to move forward with the services agreement, they have the bikes in stock. So it's a very short period of time after signing the services agreement that we would be able to implement our program. Ryan also indicated to me that two other municipalities have already returned their services agreement and are fully on board. And there are several others who are in the same stage that we are, that they're on the brink of bringing that agreement to their city council for approval. But because of the situation of COVID-19, that they kind of hit a bit of a pause button to see where their finances are. I've also learned that Shodene has become a major player in the network of the Bike Share. They have agreed to put several stations within their properties in St. Charles, in Elburn, and also in Mill Creek. So this would add to the network of bicycles. Not only is it on the bike path, the river path, but it also broadens it out east and west where it brings in some of our surrounding communities' ability for an east-west type of network as well. So just wanted to share that information with you. Does anybody have any questions or comments about Colony? All right, then, moving on. With regard to our Batavia Dam, I was recently contacted by Brenda Shory of the Daily, I'm sorry, King County Chronicle, you probably saw the article that she recently did. She attended a seminar that was sponsored by the Illinois Department of Natural Resources where they gave a rundown of their project to remove all of the low-head dams along the Fox River. And they mentioned that they were doing phase one engineering for the removal of the dam in North Aurora and that the other neighboring dams to include Batavia, Geneva, and St. Charles were also on their radar as future communities that they were planning to work with and indicated that they had met with us back in January. And so I have contacted the Park District. And at our last meeting, which was back in February, the Park District had indicated that they have asked their contractor for master river planning to create a scope of work that would encompass reviewing where our plans stood back in 2000 as far as the plan for the removal of the dam and the preservation of the depot pond in order to just make an evaluation of the feasibility of that plan in today's world so that we could understand, is that still a plan that we could implement today? Or are there some fresh ideas from an engineering standpoint that we should consider? When I receive that scope of work, I would be happy to share that with you and we can have a discussion surrounding that.
Is there any indication on how quickly they're going to have that?
I have asked them for and estimated the date, and I haven't heard that answer back yet, but I'd have you share that information with you when it's received.
Yeah, I just got the impression when we were on the call with the state in January that they wanted our information pretty quickly. And my concern would be, I guess I have two concerns, and maybe they're just unfounded right now because we don't have any information, that we missed some sort of timeframe from the state because we're waiting on the, on the Park District, you know, to be closer in line. And the reason I want to say that is because obviously what's going on now, they change funding for something on the road where they all of a sudden say, oh, we only had money for two and we did North Aurora and then we did, you know, Geneva because Geneva happened to have, be ready to go, I'm just making stuff up. So that's one side. The other concern I have is if the Park District says, yes, we want to put in a berm and a bike path and do all this stuff, and that's why we want to save the pond, and that's five, six, seven million dollars to put in a berm, the state's not going to pay that, the state's paying for the removal of the dam. I don't want to lose a million dollars or whatever it is to remove the dam in funding because the Park District can't pay to save the pond. So it's kind of, it's a tough situation because they almost go hand in hand, but not entirely because they, the dam is causing environmental issues that should be corrected, in my opinion. And love the, love the pond, but Park District's responsible for that too. And how is that going to come down to us? If they're saying, well, we only have a million dollars, can you guys put in a million or whatever it happens to be? I know the grand plan was eight to 10 million 20 years ago. So those are my concerns right now, is waiting too long.
So to answer your first question, no, we have not missed any deadline. What we talked about back in January with IDNR was that, given their workload right now with their current projects, that they said, boy, you know, if we pick this conversation back up again six months from now, that's probably the perfect timing from our perspective. So it looks like we are still in line with the timing that the IDNR set forth. And we do, you know, these, these plans that were done back in 2000 were extremely specific. And so hopefully, we will be leaps and bounds ahead of, you know, it's not like we're starting a plan from scratch. With regard to what might happen if we determine that that plan is still feasible, is the Batavia Park District, what does it look like in terms of how, as a city, that gets paid for? That is, you know, I think that that is a reconvening of the two bodies of the Park Board and City Council to discuss what the options are. Okay, just some other items that I wanted to provide you with an update about. Our finance department is working on a very unusual onsite audit in that it is not onsite. It's a very unusual process that they have to do this year. And it's kind of painstakingly time-consuming because as opposed to providing the auditors with documents onsite, it's, you know, having to scan things and share things electronically, which really is slowing up the process and creating a lot more work in a time that's busy anyway. As Public Works, I just want to make you aware of a few projects. The underground utility work for the 2019 area three sewer separation project is almost complete. This week, our contractors will begin to focus on pavement curb and sidewalk construction. Underground utility work has begun on the Main Street project. Contractors are generally working from Water Street, Westward, Ward, Van Nordwick. Detour routes have been improved after the beginning to help minimize any driver confusion. Emergency vehicular access has been restored at Van Nordwick and will remain in place until construction activities reach that location. And then we also received some favorable bids for the Ward 1 drainage project that, and staff will present the recommendation for that project to move forward in the coming weeks. And from a communication standpoint, we have received the final draft of our community survey and hope to be getting that out to residents in the near future. We've also submitted the new City of Batavia logo to the National Savvy Awards competition, that is through the 3CMA. We're continuously trying to keep people updated on the daily information that comes to us in regard, with regard to the COVID-19 pandemic situation. And so the city has set up a webpage, a separate webpage that provides information. You can get that by going to the city's homepage and connecting from there as well. We try to share all of the newest information on social media as well. And that's all I have for project status unless anybody has any questions.
Laura, I have a question. This is Nick.
Hi, Nick.
Just moving back, I had a mute button problem earlier when you were talking about the Shodene thing. I just had a question, when, with the option of DTIF-ing and RETIF-ing, in doing that, do we need to resell the other taxing bodies? And do we take the risk of them saying, uh-uh, again?
Great question. So the process is different for TIF establishment versus extending the TIF. When, in order to establish the TIF, we have to convene what is called the Joint Review Board, which is all of the different taxing bodies. They do vote, but their, their recommendation is advisory to city council. It is not binding.
Oh, okay. Okay, that's, I was just concerned because with the unanimous vote against the extension, I was concerned that if we had to get a vote for that option, you know, by the school board, that they may not be for it, so.
Right.
Okay, that was my only question.
Sure.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, do we have any others tonight?
Alan.
Go ahead, Marty.
Yeah, I just want to give a shout out to all of the community organizations that are doing donations, Close Closet, Food Pantry, Main Street, working on their collection. There, it is just amazing how all of our organizations are being run by all of our neighbors and they are out there finding every single imaginable need and trying to cover it. And that is just phenomenal. So much so that, got to even give a shout out to Nick Nindorf. I don't know if anybody saw his challenge for raising, he raised $10,000 to get my haircut. So I now have a $10,000 haircut. So that's awesome.
I thought you were.
Alan.
Marty. Hey, Alan. You're the least guy who needs a haircut.
Go ahead, Mike.
So on top of what Marty had to say, Batavia Main Street created a fundraiser, taking care of our caretakers. And they had a, what they called it was a double blessing meal. And they purchased meals from Batavia restaurants and then delivered them to frontline workers, hospital workers, firefighters, et cetera. They, last week or a week, week or so ago, they delivered it to Mooseheart and to Mooseheart's staff, which Mooseheart, obviously, as everyone knows, is a residential facility for children. And so they went to Chick-fil-A and bought, purchased 110 Chick-fil-A chicken sandwiches and other accoutrements and delivered them to Mooseheart for their staff and for the children, the residents there. And, you know, sometimes Mooseheart gets forgotten, it's way on the south end there. But I just wanted to say thank you to Batavia Main Street for that. And I know Gary Erwiler, who is the manager of, the executive director, I should say, of Mooseheart was just really taken back by it all and just thought it was wonderful that people would care for Mooseheart, but they do. I just wanted to make, make that known. That's all. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, I think next up then, we would need a motion to go into an executive session for collective bargaining, and I believe we're going to do a second meeting for that. Am I correct, Laura?
Yes. So we would sign off from this meeting. And then with the invitation that Howard provided you, we'd log into the executive session. And so we would adjourn this meeting at this point because there is no, nothing to be acted upon coming out of.
That we wouldn't leave this meeting open and then come back to it. We'll just adjourn it to go into an executive session.
Yes.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, and then we will be going into an executive session and collective bargaining.